Before we start with Student of the Month, we have a special proclamation this evening that's going to be made by Mayor Buckley. And joining us up here for the proclamation will be Dr. Kaiser, David Miller with Greenscape. He's the chairperson. Beth Berg, Jackie Brown, some of our FFA members, Hung Up Kids, Chris By and Chris Kaufman.
First of all, it's a pleasure for me to be here tonight and to see some of you folks I haven't seen in a little bit. I don't generally attend school board meetings, but I really appreciate what the school board does for our school system. And when I talk to people in public, I tell them that if you don't have a good school system and a good library, your city's not going to be any good. I believe that. I said that during a campaign. And now as mayor, when I go out and promote our city, I say the exact same words. So I mean it, and I'm very grateful for what you folks do. So here's a proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed that to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture, a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and today, members of the Beech Grove FFA chapter are celebrating Arbor Day with us at the opening of the New Life Sciences Academy at Beech Grove High School. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of topsoil, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of businesses, areas, and unify our community. And whereas they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And now therefore, I Dennis Buckley do hereby proclaim this ninth of October 2012 as celebration of Arbor Day in the city of Beech Grove, Indiana. And urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to promote our trees, woodlands, parks. And furthermore, I urge all individuals, businesses, and groups like the Beech Grove FFA chapter and students of the New Life Sciences Academy to celebrate and enjoy Beech Grove's outdoors and the richness of our city through the planting and preservation of trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. In witness whereof, I have unto set my hand as cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Beech Grove, Indiana, on this ninth day of October 2012. Dr. Kaiser?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I want to special hats off to our sponsor, Chris Kaufman, Chris By for his role and our students. You are the first members of the Beech Grove High School FFA. That's something you should be very proud of, and a tradition that you can carry on in your own homes with your relatives and your families. And just know that tree that you helped plant this evening will be there for generations. So we thank you for being part of this, and we're very, very proud of your efforts. Thank you. And on behalf of the Beech Grove Greenscape Commission, we would like to award the Tree City flag for this year to Beech Grove Schools and the FFA that you can display in your new facility. Thank you.
Okay, let's get started with Student of the Month.
Good evening. I'm going to go a little shorter than I normally do this evening because our Student of the Month, as you might be able to tell, is an eighth grader. And probably in about 25 minutes, we'll be having kickoff for our eighth grade game. So we're going to go fairly quickly here to get him there for kickoff. Along the same lines of what we just saw, Beech Grove Middle School also has an FFA chapter. And in talking with the sponsors today, we have 56 eighth graders that are members of our FFA. And last, or a couple of weeks ago, they participated in the district meeting in Whiteland, and will certainly attend the national convention downtown over our fall recess. We're also excited to sponsor our first enrichment opportunity for our intercession. And Mrs. Blazer is offering a unit on the Holocaust that culminates in a day-long trip to Terre Haute, the Candle's Museum, where they'll tour that and also meet a survivor of the Holocaust. Right now, we have 42 registered for that, and I think that's probably all we can handle right now. We're also offering remediation for about 40 students in reading, language arts, and math for our 21st century grade. As I mentioned just a few minutes ago, our fall sports wrap up tonight with football. Just a couple of highlights, our eighth grade volleyball team came out of the gate really strong this year and ended strong with the conference championship. Our girls' cross-country team won the conference this week as well as finishing second overall in Marion County and taking a fourth and a sixth place out of approximately 120 runners. That was our girls' team. We finished our first round of acuity and our first round of TAP observations. And in addition, we've changed our focus and connections to language arts remediation where we're basing in our Common Core standards. Now for our Student of the Month. If you want to come up here, please. Stand right there. The Titan Team would like to recognize Connor Carter as our Student of the Month. We believe that Connor embodies many of the characteristics inherent for a successful life. He is an exemplary student who sets a positive example for others throughout our community, whether it's in school or on the athletic field. Connor is not afraid of a challenge. He engages in a rigorous schedule each day at the middle school, whereas he is enrolled in several advanced level courses. He studies Algebra One, Advanced Language Arts, as well as Applied Life Sciences, which is for high school credit. His strong work ethic and his desire to learn will give him an edge next year at the high school. Connor is always prepared for class with his homework and other assignments meticulously completed. He is attentive and quiet during class and always exhibits a positive and respectful attitude toward his peers and teachers. Connor is an asset in the classroom due to his active participation in discussions and his ability to make a wise observation at just the right moment. Connor's hard work and determination are not only present in the classroom, he also excels on the athletic field. He possesses strong leadership skills which make him an integral part of the football team. He is committed to his sport and his teammates, making him a positive role model on and off the field. Connor is a true all-around student athlete. We are glad that Connor is part of the Titan Team this year. It's a pleasure to have him in class, and we look forward to watching him grow and evolve throughout the school year. Congratulations.
Good evening. Glad to be here tonight. Couple things that Beech Grove High School I'd like to share with you. On September 28th, we had the Veterans Appreciation Line. And there's a few people in this room I'd like to recognize. We're going to do a little bit of something later on as well. Joe Wolfa is a gentleman that was a big part of this. Melody Stevens, Tracy Park, who works with Chocola. Ronnie Jones, who works with Burp Duh Heaven, and he helped, he provided the food. Mayor Buckley and Dr. Kaiser and Janice King, all were there. It turned out to be a very neat thing. My mom and dad even came from Lebanon, and they really enjoyed it. I think we're going to do this each year, and each year it'll grow and grow and grow. But we'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. Our band, last weekend, they placed second at Center Grove Invitational. This week, they get to travel for the region all the way down to Evansville. I think they perform at nine o'clock on Saturday night. The musical, we just had this past weekend, Little Shop of Horace, was just fantastic. Mr. Bush, we had about 35 students that were involved in that musical. And if you didn't have a chance to go see it, you can purchase the CD from Mr. Kraft, who's here tonight, for $10. And it's a great show, and all that money goes back towards the drama club and then also the musical. Intercessions come out in the next couple of weeks. We have a few things going on too at the high school. We're going to have our credit rescue like we normally do. That actually starts this Thursday, on the 11th, and then the 16th, 17th, the 23rd, and the 24th for students to come in, do rescue credits, and also do remediation. We have Ben Simmons College Trip. We have some students that are going down to Ben Simmons University that Mrs. Matthews, Ms. Minnick, and Ms. Lowe put together, and that's on Thursday, October 18th. We have a hiking club that's going to state parks and historical locations around Indiana that Mr. Bradford has put together, and that's Monday through Thursday, on the 15th through the 18th. So we have a lot of activities going on. But a big one too is the FFA. The second week of the break, we'll be going to the FFA National Convention. This year, it happens to be in Indianapolis. And so that's the 24th to the 27th. And we have 35 students that are attending the national convention for this year. Both Chris, Mr. Kaufman, and Mr. By, Mr. Banks have done a great job on putting together the FFA program, and we have student leaders that have just done a tremendous job. So that'll be a great time for them. We also have a couple of other students I wanted to recognize tonight. Edwards Jones, our investment company here in town. He sponsors the Scholar Athlete of the Month. This month, it's Jason Smith. He's a sophomore cross-country runner. He has a GPA of 4.09. He's cut a minute off his time so far this year, and he's been in the top three the entire fall. And matter of fact, as I speak, we're running in the high school, I just say, Asectional. It's a new path, and they're on the track right now, or on the field right now, the course. C9 students this month, we have two of them. Taylor West is in the veterinary assisting program. One of her teachers wrote, Mrs. Smith wrote, "Taylor's very determined and dependable student. She has shown excellent leadership skills in her class." A second one is Sebastian Hunter. He's the C9 student of the month at law enforcement. And Mr. Shively, his teacher says, "Sebastian has a great leadership skills and very committed to the law enforcement program at C9." So we're very proud of those two students as well. But tonight, we're here to honor a special student of Beech Grove High School, and that's Ellen Skidmore. Come on up, Ellen. Ellen's a senior. She's the daughter of Claire and the late Chris Skidmore. She is 14th in her class right now, has a 3.5 GPA. She's been in academic honor roll program, or six consecutive semesters here at Beech Grove High School. She's a VIP student three different times in four years that she's been here. And she's the president of the Hornet Mentors with her freshman group. She does after-school tutoring at Beech Grove High School. As I said, she works with the Hornet Mentoring Program. She works in the Hornet Richmond Academy for the ninth grade part of the day. And she's the mathematics science counselor at Dellwood Girl Scout Camp also. It's a day camp. One of her faculty members wrote, and this is Ms. Lowe, said, "Ellen's lead tutor in after-school tutoring. Ellen took charge of the after-school tutoring program, making all kinds of signs and posters as well as organizing other students who they'd be working with. She's a great leader of that program. She also is one of the presidents of the Hornet Mentor Program that also Ms. Lowe works with. She set up the mentoring program this summer. She organized the freshman orientation program this summer, ordered the bracelets that they gave out to all the freshmen. She'd sign all the mentors to their students, and she's already completed one of the freshman tag opportunities, which is about study skills. So she's been a great leader, according to Ms. Lowe, and I agree. Ellen's future plans, she wants to attend the University of Louisiana at Lafayette and major in speech pathology. That's Ellen Skidmore.
Good evening. Parent-teacher conferences are going on at South Grove as we speak. Most of the teachers are doing them through this week, so if you are a parent and you haven't gotten your schedule, please contact your child's teacher, and we will get that scheduled. Last Thursday night, South Grove hosted its first academic night. In the past, we've always had a literacy night and a math night, but we combined it all into one this year, and we had it last Thursday, October 4th. At last count, we had approximately 375 parents, students, and family members in attendance. We had 375 sign up, and then we know people came in the door, so we don't have a full count, but we're thinking 375 to 400. The night kicked off in the gymnasium with the presentation from Brad Lamar, the middle school master teacher, and he's also a published children's author. So he came and spoke to everybody about publishing books. The students received a free book that was in their reading range, as well as math flash cards. And all throughout the building, there were tables set up with different math and literature games and activities, because the purpose of the evening was to show parents that even if it's simple games, you can work with your children on their academics. We had take-home games, and we had just areas for them to sit and really get involved with their child, even if it was just five minutes at a table at one game. So all through the building, we had things set up. There was a book walk in the cafeteria where they could win a free book. Popcorn was popping. We had nine gift baskets donated, and we were able to raffle those off. So many thanks to the Beech Grove City Schools Administration Office, the South Grove office staff, the South Grove PTO, Melody Stevens, the Teachers Credit Union, Indiana Members' Credit Union, Sam's Club, and the Community Hospital for their generous donations. The money that we made off of the raffle all goes back into the pot for next year's academic night. So we're just going to roll the money over and use it for next year so we can buy the books and the flash cards and things for the kids. We were thrilled by the turnout. Almost 400 people in the building, it was wonderful. It was a great experience for all, and I wanted to thank all the teachers and the staff members that stayed to help get it set up and get the activities and the games organized and out for the parents to enjoy. But also a huge thank you to Mrs. Stacy Johnson. She is our reading interventionist at South Grove. She organized the entire event, and it was well organized, and it ran very smoothly. And thanks to her, it was a wonderful experience for the parents and the students. But now I'd like to introduce Spencer Chapman. Come on up, Spencer. Spencer is South Grove's Student of the Month. And it's interesting, because when I came in and Mr. Buckler said, "Who's your Student of the Month?", and I said, "Spencer Chapman", he goes, "Great kid." So you know it's great. And Spencer is the son of Tanya and Keith Chapman. Mrs. Camperato said that Spencer is an exceptional student. He is an excellent student role model that is liked by all who know him. She said she would gladly take 30 Spencers in her classroom every day. Ms. Piper said that Spencer is an enthusiastic learner who seems to enjoy school. He consistently conducts himself with maturity and can be depended on to do what he is asked to do. Mr. Irwin, Spencer's fifth grade teacher, said that Spencer always followed directions. He was very helpful to his peers and his teachers. Mrs. Mitchell, his fourth grade teacher, said that Spencer always did the right thing. He was a great classroom family member. When Mrs. Mitchell was redoing seating assignments, she would have liked to have had a Spencer Chapman in each of the table groups. Spencer's kind-heartedness, contagious smile, and positive demeanor make him well-deserving to be South Grove's Student of the Month.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to go over a few things that happened in the last couple of weeks. On Thursday, September 27th, we were privileged to have Congressman Andre Carson visit our school. He was able to tour the building, interact with some staff, and to observe one of our TAP cluster meetings. We were able to discuss the impact that the implementation of the TAP framework has had on our school. He was very impressed with the level of professional development our staff is participating in and the high achievement level of our students. A special thank you to Patty Pearlitt, who's our master teacher, for presenting Cluster to a group that included many observers, including Congressman Carson, Dr. Kaiser, Mr. Barnes, Mrs. Stevens. There were several people in the room in addition to the normal teachers. I'm pleased that we were able to highlight the exceptional things going on at Central. Last Thursday and Friday, the students and teachers hosted grandparents and other special guests. Our program included a visit to the classroom, a musical program, and a slideshow with the pictures of the many things that have occurred so far this school year. Special thanks to Patty Rivia, Joe Hernandez, and Jim Adams for helping to prepare the cafeteria for our program. We had about 35 minutes to turn the place around and get ready two days in a row. Also, special recognition to our new music teacher, Natalie Utter, for presenting a wonderful music portion for both of the afternoons. Thanks to Tammy Lawson for preparing the slideshow, and the ladies in the cafeteria who baked over 1,000 cookies for us to pass out between the two days. Everyone enjoyed their afternoon. It was a real success. This is just kind of the public service announcement. If you don't already know, Main Street is under construction. Every day, we're having to change the drive, the drop-off, and the pickup in the front of the school. There'll be lane restrictions, street closures. Mrs. Prindl can attest that every afternoon and every morning, it's a surprise as to what we have. So just be aware that there's going to be some changes to what's going on. Unfortunately, our Student of the Month was not able to be here this evening, so I'm going to go ahead and read the information on Shakaya. Our September Student of the Month is Shakaya Rogers Parker. Mrs. Hart, Shakaya's classroom teacher, describes Shakaya as an excellent student. She always tries her best and helps those around her to try their best. She is a good neighbor to her peers. She is always on task, and that's 100% of effort into her work. She comes to class organized and ready to learn and always wearing a smile, even on those tough days. Mrs. Dody, Shakaya's Title I teacher, says she's polite and respectful to others around her. She stays focused on her work until it is completed. She works hard and always has a positive attitude. She's a joy to work with. Finally, Mrs. Duncan, her reading teacher, tells us that Shakaya is a very sweet and polite girl. She participates well in reading and is always willing to help others. Shakaya is an excellent example of an outstanding student, one we are always pleased to recognize. Congratulations to our September Student of the Month, Shakaya Rogers Parker. And I'll make sure that she gets her certificate.
Well, good evening. I'm Erin Provis, the principal at Hornet Park Elementary, just across the parking lot. I have a few exciting things I would like to share with you this evening. The first thing I'd like to highlight is something that multiple schools were able to take advantage of this year. We have a special and new relationship with adult and child. This is a program that offers school-based behavioral and emotional support to our students as well as support to some of our families. It's a wonderful tool and resource for our families and students and staff. I participated in a number of referrals, and we've already started to build up a client base for Ms. Amber Moore, who was our representative at Hornet Park. So not only is it a wonderful resource for our school, but it also has added a family member at Hornet Park in Ms. Moore. So we appreciate that, and we appreciate the new relationship with adult and child. In addition to the adult and child announcement, I wanted to share with you about a program we have going on at Hornet Park this year. You may have heard the buzz about the Spirit Sticks. So I told Mr. Buckler I was wearing my lanyard up, because normally I ask him to tell me if I still have my keys on. But I wanted to show you, we're doing a character education program in which students can earn or purchase Spirit Sticks. And they're soft, safe for our young ones, and they're really, really fun, by the way. So it's a whole program based around different character education traits. Some of these students can earn just by being our Student of the Month, so Amy, you'll get one shortly. You can earn them by being a bus driver, a bus, not the bus driver of the month, the bus rider of the month, as Mr. Fred would know. We have bug awards, Spirit Sticks that are when you're caught being unusually good. All kinds of fun things that we've offered. We had for a special day of attendance this year, if you were there, you got a Spirit Stick. So opportunities for kids to receive Spirit Sticks, but then also, we're doing some kind of building of generosity as well with our canned food drive. If you bring a certain number of canned food items, there's a special canned food Spirit Stick as well. Or we have a no-bully zone stick. So you may hear a little bit about Spirit Sticks. I want you to realize that it is a way for us to build, kind of chatter about our character education program. Some things are donated to the kids, and some are just for fun that they can purchase as well. So a special thanks to the Education Foundation, who provided us a little bit of a startup fund so that we could purchase some of our initial giveaways. So a special thank you for that spring grant. So anyway, you'll probably want to be getting your Spirit Sticks too, I'm sure. Also, the other thing I wanted to mention from Hornet Park is we just finalized our school plan for, that follows the TAP guidelines. And I just wanted to give you the overarching themes of the school plan. It is really focused around reading. You know, that's our number one priority, is we want to build strong readers. And so our overarching school plan is reading. As you drill down, it goes into foundational skills, which according to WEA is defined by three different pieces, that is writing, phonemic awareness, and phonics. So for our next cluster cycle, which is just a short-term goal, we're working on a writing skill. And then for Cluster Cycle Three, we will focus on phonics. And we will pull what we learned last year in TAP, which was phonemic awareness. So we are really attacking this reading skill in the school plan. So I look forward to being able to report to you later about our progress and ultimately reaching and probably exceeding our school goal this year. Well, as you know, we have our two-week fall break coming up just around the corner, and I want to encourage families to read together. You know, it's fall, and our preschool just took a field trip to the apple orchard on Friday. Well, the morning group the afternoon had to do an improv field trip in the building because of the rain. But you know, they say an apple a day keeps the doctor away. Well, over fall break, I want to remind you that a book a day with your child will build a strong reader, they say. So make sure that you're reading over that break, over this fall break. So lots of exciting things going on. I could talk and talk, but I will not. I wanted to take the moment to recognize that which we're most proud of at Hornet Park, and that is our Student of the Month. At this time, I'd like to invite Ava Condon to come up, please. And I'm going to share some wonderful things staff have had to say about Ms. Ava. All right, Mrs. Borgert says that Ava is a shining example of a joyfully compassionate child. Those are good words, aren't they? She's consistently eager to help her students and staff. She is willing to help others, and it never goes by unnoticed. Ava is a kind-hearted child who makes friends with everyone. She's a great hornet, and I'm so very proud of her. For Mrs. Sutton, she says Ava is a one-in-a-million kind of kid. She's a great listener. She tackles every challenge with a great attitude and a smile, and she is just a pleasure to have in class. Students like Ava are few and far between, and I feel so blessed to have her. And for Mrs. Stoltz, it starts with, "Aww, yay, Ava." Can I say that she might just be the sweetest thing ever? She is so helpful in speech and with her other student classmates. She's always doing the right thing, waiting her turn, talking during appropriate times, and following directions. She always tries her best, and she's showing great progress because of her hard work. So I'm proud to present Ava Condon as Hornet Park Student of the Month.
Well, this year, we started the Hornet and Richmond Academy, which is, for those that don't know, it's the building, the Antem Bank Building. And so far, it has been a wonderful program. We are going on a field trip tomorrow to the Indianapolis Museum of Art. And so we approximately have about 40 students that will be going. And then we're going to come back, and we're going to work on some projects in regard to the museum. And I was just informed five minutes before the meeting started that I would be coming up here, so I have no notes, nothing to go on. So just bear with me if I'm all over the place. I'm just going to jump right into the Student of the Month. Brooke Lee, you want to come on up here? I'll tell you a little bit about Brooke. First time that I had any contact with her was over the phone. And I called to let her know that she would be in our morning session, because we have a morning and an afternoon session. Some stay all day. But I gave her, I just told her, I said, "You know, you will be in our morning session." She said, "Well, can I be all day?" Sure. Most kids would probably jump all over the fact that they could be a half-day student. She wanted to be full day. I said, "That's fine." From the moment she came into our building, she gets her MacBook out, she gets on the computer, and I mean, she does not stop. When it's lunchtime, they can take a break, they can eat their lunch, they talk, they socialize. Brooke is still at her desk, on the computer, while she's eating. She has knocked out two semester credits in a nine-weeks period thus far, and she's about and she's about ready to complete about another group. And those are her two requirement classes. Not only is she a fully student at the H E A, she also goes down to Hornet Park and works in the Specialty Ed Preschool with Ms. Kathy. And Ms. Kathy had wrote up a phenomenal little bit in regards to Brooke, and I wish I had that in front of me. She just said how nurturing she is with the students, and anything she asks her to do, she's more than willing to do, and she does a great job at it. And not only does she work at Hornet Park in Ms. Kathy's class, but she also is on Mr. Fred's bus in the afternoon as like a bus helper, a bus monitor. And he basically said that it's just a hundred percent change of having her on there in the afternoon for the ride home. The kids are much more quieter, they stay in their seats. So, she's done a fantastic job with that. And if anybody ever knows or has ever ridden a kindergarten, first-grade bus, you realize how difficult that is and challenging that is as a driver. So, she's done a phenomenal job all around. So, I introduce our first H E A Student of the Month, Brooke Payne.
Tonight, it seems like it's an evening full of awards and recognitions. Dr. Kaiser also has a special recognition he would like to make before we begin.
Well, first of all, gosh, a few years back, I had a chance to meet a Colby Young man who really has an impact on our school and our community, Mr. Joe Wolf. Joe and some of my relatives on the South Side, and Fred is our expert on the South Side. If you read his column in the newspaper, I love reading those. And, you know, there's a real history about the connection with Beech Grove and just the South Side in general. And got a chance to kind of really, kind of get to know Joe. Actually, at a funeral, my granddad Josephine's funeral, who actually helped raise Joe over in Fallon Square. He's very proud of his heritage and his background and in his military service. He's very involved in bringing Chocola back, which, you know, is my favorite drink. My wife actually made some comments, said, "Do you really like that stuff?" So, it brings me back to about Fall Creek and Illinois Street and Joe Patista's Drug Store. My dad used to go there. He was a police officer. And I'd go there once, twice a week and read a Treasure Chest magazine, have a nice glass bottle of Chocola. So, every time I get a chance to buy it at the Dairyland, I get some. But Joe's had a lot of impact in a lot of different ways. And I think one of the neat things that he brings to our community is just his love for kids. He's coached at Little Flower, about every Catholic school on the east side of Indianapolis. He's very involved in a lot of different things. But I think one of the things was really meaningful to me, he brought a new program for us, and it was a recognition of veterans. You know, my grandfather served in World War I, my father served in World War II. And, you know, two weeks ago on Friday, it was so neat to have the announcement of all the different branches of services. And Steve did a great job, and they had an emblem for every different branch of the service. And I'm out there with Mary Buckley and Dennis goes, "Hey, let's go shake their hands." And it was a privilege for me to see a very young soldier, Dennis' son, to, I think the one gentleman was ninety...
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one years of age. And to have them get up and talk in public about, you know, what their experiences were was really just kind of neat. So, with that, Joe, I'd like to invite you up here as a special thank you and a tribute for your efforts. And this is a copy of the beautiful brochure that was designed, I think, along with Melody. Helped you with this. And we'd like to present this to you in a frame and say thank you very much. And I think she wants the photo op here. And now... And I hand this to you now. The other thing is, you know, it's always important. I had a parent that sent me an email about, you know, wanting to come to Beech Grove. And I said, "Well, I signed up for second semester." And I ended it with, "It's a great day to be a hornet." So, to make sure Joe has the full attire, and I've got a sweatshirt and two T-shirts in my office, so pop by any time. But we have brand-new Beech Grove hats that are sale. Robin can set you up on that, or Brian. But so, we're giving this as a marketing tool, so you can go out and wear this all over and remind people about how great Beech Grove is. But I value your friendship more than anything. Thank you very much.
Better be good, more than...
The main thing I'd like to point out is, as Dr. Kaiser said, Joe's just a great man. I've known him, I think, five years. And he loves kids, he loves my son, and that goes along with it too. But in the five years, Joe's done nothing but create programs and help Beech Grove High School in a lot of different ways to getting our kids the things they need in all the sports and other programs. So, you know, when we talk about support for a school, he's been our number-one supporter. And I love him to death. He's a great friend.
Let me say this. In Beech Grove, Indiana, you're very lucky to have, even in Buckley's case, the mayor of America. But I've known Kaiser, and I've known Steve, and I know the Donahues. And I want to tell you, we're very lucky to have this. I graduated from Catholic schools. But I'll tell you something. If I had a kid who was going to go to school, and I'm seventy-four, so obviously I don't have any children, but I would send him right here to Beech Grove High School, grade school, and all through your school system. I've never met a more of a class act than him and the few. I really mean that. And the other thing, the guy that really found the Chocola thing out graduated from Beech Grove. That's Dan Ariah.
Nineteen eighty-one.
Nineteen eighty-one when it came out. And the other thing I'd say about that, if we're back on the market or large, they ain't selling Chocola. I'm just saying. But that happens. If you wait around long enough, a lot of things happen. My dad died when I was fourteen years old. And this is the greatest thing in the world, the school.
Kelly Skor, if you'd like to come up, maybe just talk. I know we had a traffic issue. Just, I want to, just want you to come on up and maybe just add some comments about our Student of the Month and just really in the Enrichment Academy in general. As she's coming up, you know, as a school system, we're always looking to improve. And last year, we found out that we had forty students who decided to kind of stop coming to school. And that's just, that's not, we're not going to accept that. And through a lot of leadership from Stephen Cox and his high school counselors, and we recruited Kelly to be the leader of the Hornet Enrichment Academy. And, you know, whatever you call it, for at-risk kids, it's for kids that really were not meeting their needs here in the big house. And so, Kelly, I don't know if you want to just make some general comments about your vision, what's taking place with the Enrichment Academy, and then add some words about our Student of the Month from your perspective. And I know, I really appreciate your leadership and your hard work and what you've done. And I would invite anybody, we're going to have an open house sometime after fall break specifically for the Enrichment Academy. You need to come visit and see it, see it in action, see what's taking place. So, Kelly, if you could just make some remarks.
A couple of things. I just met Brooke in the parking lot. If I could say a few things about Brooke, I think Brooke sort of epitomizes the essence of what the Hornet Enrichment Academy is about. And I know Shelley talked a little bit about her. But Brooke has been a young mother for a couple of years. She's excelled not only academically by earning high school credits, but really stepped forward from a community standpoint and stepped up to help Hornet Park. And we're really proud of her. And I get a little emotional, because it's kind of a labor of love to some extent. Today, we had the opportunity to spend about two hours outside in the park area next to the academy and really get to know some of the kids that are there. Again, it's emotional for me because it is a labor of love. These kids need people that are there to care about them, to extend them a second chance, a second opportunity. And that's what the academy is about. We have students that don't progress at the same rate as everyone else. We have students who struggle with personal issues, academic issues. And this is their home, it's their place, it's their second chance. They may not get there in the same round or the same place as everybody else, but we get them there. Brooke is a perfect example. She has earned two high school credits in the last nine weeks. She's been out of high school for a year, year and a half. And we expect her to graduate by May, which is really exciting for her. Tomorrow, we take our first field trip with our students. We're going to the Indianapolis Museum of Art. We're taking the whole group. So, that's exciting for them. It's a place most of them have never been. So, we hope, as time goes on, to incorporate more of our project-based learning curriculum with our students. As we've discussed with our teachers, one thing that we notice with our students is that we have to move them into a more hands-on approach. That's what keeps them interested, it's what keeps them engaged, and it's what helps them make progress. And so, ultimately, that's our vision for them, is to help them make connections, to help them find meaning in their education, and hopefully move them on towards graduation.
Okay, everyone, that concludes the awards portion of the meeting. We're going to have a five-minute break, and here, if you'd like to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome, or you're free to go. Thank you. Mr. Collins, please start the review update, please.
What's going to happen to many of you is the Department of Education is going to release, what's called the A U F scores, where they're going to give each school a letter grade and then a district a letter grade. It's embargoed now. It's potentially going to come. I think they copied it from a letter score, so it's kind of a copy from that. But what I'd like you to know is to kind of appreciate what it means or what it doesn't mean. I don't really expect you to figure out how to do it, because it took me a day to figure it out. But I want you to see how complicated it is and some of the factors. So, if someone in the community says, "What does this mean?", at least you'll have a feeling for it, okay? So, we have what's an elementary version, and then we have a high score, because they're tested different ways, and it's based on test scores. So, if you look at the first part, if you are an elementary that we grades K through A, or K through three through eight, where the I step is given, what they do is they have what are called growth. In order to have growth, you have to have two scores. So, in order for someone like me to figure this out, if you look at the first, you first of all, look at the passing rate, which is pretty easy, because they tell you what the passing rate is. They give me examples. One passing rate for math, one passing rate for language arts, so we have two. That's the easy part. Then, they want you to look at the bottom twenty-five percent of the kids who scored. The kids who scored at the bottom twenty-five percent. So, that means you have to go and see who those kids are. Then, they want you to figure out whether they had high growth or not. Now, you can't figure out whether they had high growth or not until you have a definition of what high growth is. So, you're kind of stuck right here, because you really don't know which, what is high growth. You have to take their first score and subtract the second score to get a growth anyway. So, that's where it gets real complicated. If you have the numbers on the right between those or those amounts, then they give you plus points, so they add to your score. Then, they look at the same thing, add the top seventy-five percent, and see, did they get high growth or not? Again, I don't know. You need to look at two scores, you've got to go to every kid, see whether they're in the top seventy-five percent, whether they have growth or not. And then, you have to have a definition of what high growth is. And you get more add points added if you happen to have high growth. Then, they look at all the kids who got low growth. And if you have this amount of kids with low growth, then they deduct points from. So, again, you have to know what low growth is. You know, the state could tell you, and they haven't told me what it is yet. Then, you have to have at least ninety-five participation devices. If you have less than that, they take points away. They put all this together, and this is how they figure out the A through F, four grades, three through eight. Luckily for Central, they don't have any growth, because third grades don't have a test before that. So, there's, it's real simple. It's just the passing rate, which we've got in the history. And we're going to talk a little bit later about growth, which has nothing to do with what I just told you, because this is so complicated. Most schools, districts have to pretty much take what the D O E tells them. They can look at the various kids, see if the kids are still around or not. You're supposed to only use kids that have been in your school for one hundred sixty-two days. So, that means you have to go through their whole enrollment and take out everyone to do it by the school in one hundred sixty-two days. Again, I told you, I don't expect you to know how to do this, because it's very complicated. But I want you to know what all these factors are. Now, it gets even more interesting when we get to the high school. Because remember, the high school only gives two tests that count towards the graduation. That's the ninth-grade outing test and the tenth-grade language or English test. To get growth, remember, you have to have two scores. And there's only two tests given by school. So, in order to get two scores to give growth, you have to go back to the ninth grade. So, how did they do on the ninth-grade general math test, and they can compare that to the outing test? And how did they do with the ninth-grade English test and compare it to the tenth-grade English test? So, what they do is they look only at the tenth graders, because that's the only one where you can get English scores. So, everyone in the tenth grade who was here one hundred sixty-two days, they put them in the pool, and then they go back to look at their ninth-grade scores. Once they've done that, then they can see what was the improvement rate from the grade eight to ten? And what was the improvement rate in grade ten? And then, you've got kids that are in grade eleven and twelve, and they keep adding those on. So, here, you see the improvement from eighth, group eight to tenth grade. And then, the people who were in tenth grade, how'd they do when they graduated? It's a very interesting comparison, because the general math test and answer for one are interesting ways of doing it. What I had to do is I had to go way back to their eighth-grade I-step test, pull all those scores out, put them in one column, and then go to their tenth grade and ninth grade, put another column, try to see if they were here at one hundred sixty-two days, see what the growth was, see, and then you get a point. Also, you have to look at your graduation rate. And then, you look at various types of things, like A T classes and scores, and do a credit, and they give credit for what's called college and career readings. You put all that together, and you get a分数. So, that kind of gives you an idea of what all this means. What's kind of interesting is it's so complicated that you wonder whether it was made so complicated where, you know, one couldn't understand it, and you just took whatever the state gave, and that's common. Interesting. Those are embargoed, so we'll be getting our A through F score. And what I want you to get out of this is, if someone says, "How do we score that?", you can tell them it's a real difficulty. I just want you to be prepared.
So, you just want us to tell them we don't know?
There's a lot of factors. You pull this up, get your gun, say, "This is it." And after you've gone through, maybe A, B, and C, they'll come up and say, "Okay."
Well, the D O E talks about, you know, this is transparency by, you know, being complicated. And I said at the superintendent's meetings, one through three hours, this is one of the many topics we have. And, you know, I just would say is write it on A, B, C, D based on how we scored the test. Because to measure that growth factor, there's so many, so many different things that go into that. You know, there's some advantages and disadvantages of that. Again, I'm going to emphasize that. The scores will be announced on the thirty-first. We have a tentative score, and again, we're not supposed to announce that publicly. The D O E will announce. Again, we heard from Dennis Bruce today, from D O E, and our meeting goal, have a big press conference, announce it. It'll be in the papers and every place else. Overall, we did very well. We've got some areas where we're going to work hard to get better at. But, you know, all the factors considered, you know, we did pretty well. But again, it's a good measurement. You know, we do like accountability. Accountability is really important to us. But, you know, I believe in the kiss, the principle of keeping simple stupid. And sometimes, you know, this is way overhauled on all the different factors and everything else. And there's so many things beyond our control. But overall, we're positive. And then, they take the average. In our case, we have, even Hornet Park gets a grade even though they don't take the test, because they're a feeder system to Central. because they're a feeder system to Central. So we take all our scores, we average it together, divide by five, and that's our district score. So, again, we talked more at the next board meeting about it once the, it's announced. I will tell you this, in places like Wayne Township and the larger school districts, the data is all escaped. You know, and this, because kids move from one building to the next, and it's just, you know, large districts are really struggling with accuracy. I believe we've kind of worked out most of our concerns on the accuracy between a kid and the principals have really been able to track every kid and say, "Yeah, we think our data's accurate", and it's fair by the system. But again, if, it's a target for us to improve, but, you know, overall, pretty good. Marion County as a whole, a lot of school districts are really struggling with this. And I can tell you more about November statistics and things that we've talked about. But it is what it is, it's an A through F system. You know, there are schools that after five or six years, and not doing well, they've actually been taken over, you know, and obviously, that's not even, you know, we're so far from that, because our scores are pretty good overall. And I would say that majority of our scores are in the 80 percentile.
Yeah, just a few, that's kind of my goal, is I like to see all of our scores, I'd like it in the 80s. I want to get eventually into the 90s, but the 80s is a issue.
I know Central, both those scores were in the 80, across the board, you know, more than they're. So our scores are good from that standpoint. So that's just kind of a kickoff to further discussion.
But I think you'll hear in the paper about A through F, I just wanted you to know all of what's all the factors. Now, if you look at the drawings down below there, that's what I consider growth. I took the kids when they were in third grade and the second to the fourth grade, and see if they grew, and there aren't, again, took groups rather than individual kids. So looking at that data, you can see our third graders who are now in fourth grade did grow, so there was some learning going on there, which I'd like to see. Of course, you've got kids who've been moving out, like from four to five, we had some good growth in math. Where we're kind of looking at now is from five to six, where we've lost a little bit of growth. And then six to seven, I think that was the year where those sixth graders were in the 90s or something, so I kind of guess that that would probably drop. Also, you find when they move schools, a lot of kids move in on you at that time, and so there's a lot of fluctuation. And then really good growth in seven and eight, which are what we were real proud of. If you look at the language arts, three to four was good. Again, we went down from four to five, and Tanya, they talked about that last time, about how that, they're really working on that. See, that kind of gives us an idea of where we need to concentrate. Five to six was good, six to seven went down, again, that was that group that was scored really high in sixth grade, and then they dropped a little bit, also changed schools. That's something, you know, that's a problem that we really have to look at, and see what can we do to get the kids to a zac group in the middle school. And then we did seven or eight, which I really like to see. So that's growth in those same kids, which I gave to you last time, I would come on you to go through. The next thing I want to talk just briefly about is where we are at TAP. The first year was last year, so we're in the second year. What they, what the teachers do is they meet every week for about 50 minutes in a professional element community led by the master teachers and supported by the mentor teachers. What they've done this time until now is they're reviewing the rubric, because that's what they use to evaluate the teachers. So the teachers need to know what they're gonna be evaluated for. So every year, we kind of review it. And then they went to these data, that I showed you some other data, to try to figure out what strategies Kevin, we teach the teachers to teach the kids to make them better. And they have examined those strategies, and they'll be working with those strategies. So that's where we are in each building, getting ready to target our first strategy. Now, we were called, the administrators were called together last Friday by TAP for a workshop there. What the state TAP is working with is they're waiting for the DOE to release scores, and the closest scores, so they can figure out our value-added. So until the state does something, we're kind of stuck. And luckily, TAP figures out that we're using various formulas, how much money the other person gives. So before long, we'll be getting checks, as soon as you see that DOE's released all this growth stuff, the teachers will be getting checks, and it'll be real interesting how the response to that, how we do it, and that type of there. I think it'll be really interesting. We're with a few schools, there's about 44 schools in Indiana who are giving value-added money ahead of everybody else next year, everyone will be doing it, but we're kind of getting mixed, but it's really exciting to do that. The other part of the workshop was to show us different techniques, and we have post-conferencing, because the teachers have, if they know that someone's coming in to evaluate them, they have a pre-conference, they do the evaluation, and they have a post-conference. And then they pick two areas that they want to concentrate on. So they gave you this first technique, so that's kind of where we are at TAP.
How about Melinda Stevens with the Education Foundation? That's wonderful.
Couple things about community relations and then the foundation. One thing is that we sponsored a booth at the Beach Grove Flowers Club, and many of you volunteered for that, so thank you. And Robin organized all the spiritware and got it there, and we sold spiritware those few nights, and got to talk a lot of good things about Beach Grove City Schools. So that was a wonderful opportunity in our community. And then school board members, many of you were in the wonderful convertibles in Hill County Prairie, that Ray Skilman Auto Bill Group let us borrow that evening, so that was great, and you looked absolutely fabulous in those convertibles. But that was a really fun night, too, throwing candy to everybody, so it was a, it was a good night. And as I mentioned previously, the veterans appreciation, and the great Steve Cox and Joe Wolfle were just fabulous in getting that put together. They just cannot receive enough praise for everything that they did. The veterans felt great, my dad was there, too, he's a veteran of Korea and Vietnam, and he was there, a proud Marine, and he just loved it, and it was just very touching. You could just see it in their faces, so it was very great. So we're looking forward to having an even greater one in the coming years, every single year. And as Mr. Buckler talked about, Congressman Andre Carson visited. What he failed to mention was that was that Congressman Carson was very impressed with Mr. Buckler. He talked about everybody else, but he was very impressed with Mr. Buckler's leadership at Central Elementary. Really had a great thing, Mr. Carson popped into classrooms, said hi to teachers, and kind of surprised them, and did all that kind of thing, too. Very cordial, so it was a, it was a great visit to Central. Also wanted to thank our Beach Grove Walmart. They have wanted to have partners with us, and this year, they've done that. This morning, again, at Mr. Buckler's school, Central Elementary, it's first one this week. This morning, bright and early, they came calling at Central with big model balloons. They had five $50 gift cards from Walmart. That they, we drew names, Mr. Buckler had some of the students come in for the morning announcements, drew teachers' names, and then we went to the classroom and delivered the gift cards to the teachers, and presented them in front of their class. And then Walmart also brought bags and bags of school supplies, copy paper, bulletin board supplies, all kinds of things. And not only are they gonna do it at Central, but this week, they're, it's a special teacher appreciation program for grades K through eight. So we're gonna repeat this, tomorrow morning is Hornet Park, and Thursday is South Grove, and Friday, we'll get to Middle School. So it's really an awesome thing, and they are very, very generous to us to do this. And they said, "Hey, we'll be back next year", so they're very excited about it. And then they also did a special treat, they apparently brought food back to Central for lunch today from Subway. So they're really great. So we just want to thank our Beach Grove Walmart for being so generous and supportive of Beach Grove City Schools. That was a neat, really neat project, so.
So they'll be at the school board meeting next month?
With the, bring the food, we'll have to talk about that, right? Kids first, remember?
Oh, well.
School board second, well, yeah, you are acting as kids. And then, as you heard earlier, the greenscape committee was here and facilitated doing the plant a tree, and that was a great ceremony outside the science center. So we're appreciative to them for that, and for Mayor Buckley and the proclamation for this evening. I'm also getting the second corporation newsletter of the year ready to go. It'll be smaller than the back-to-school newsletter, but it's gonna be a newsletter that we're gonna send out to the same households that we did previously, and still continue to talk about the good things, there'll be success stories from all the schools, and talk about, you know, those grades that still have vacancies for transfer students to come in. So that's one thing that we'll be talking about there also.
When will that be? Excuse me, when will that be?
It's supposed to go out in the mail on November 5th. We're also having a community open house, big ribbon cutting for the new Science Academy on Tuesday, October 13th. That's tonight, the school board meeting will start a little bit early at 5:30.
November 13th.
Oh, did I say October? I'm sorry, November 13th, excuse me. And that'll be our official opening of the new Science Academy at Beach Grove High School. We'll have some of our wonderful FBA members that you saw earlier this evening. We'll be providing tours of the facility and talking about the kinds of things that occur there. So it's gonna be a great big deal, a nice big horn ribbon to cut, and it'll be a wonderful culmination to all the hard work of our Life Sciences Advisory Committee led by Bruce Bye and all our members and our staff. So it's gonna be an exciting evening. And then also, make sure you look on the website, I try to change pictures on our homepage about every week. You will see, I don't know if it's been noticed yet, but South Grove, it's been on there. Have you seen the website yet? All right, well, you're on there.
I'm on right now.
You're on there. So we've got pictures of South Grove at dinner night, which again, Mrs. Reed, what she talked about was so true. It was a fantastic evening. The stations that were there, the excitement of families, and the students who were there was phenomenal. I mean, you could just feel it in the building, it was just really, really incredible. So well-organized, just fabulous, every, every bit about it was great. So there's some pictures on there, and also little shop of horrors, a couple pictures from Saturday night's, or Saturday afternoon's performance, which again, was also great. That was, I actually went to the matinee, there was a family matinee, and they did face painting before the show. And then the kids got to come after the show was over and get to have pictures and talk to the plant, which was really exciting, and so that was fun. Which Sam Gallagher played, he voiced the plant, and I'm telling you what, he has more personality without being able to see him than anything. So it was really fantastic, so that was a really, that was a really neat, neat play. As far as the Beach Grove Education Foundation, a new website is in the design phase, and it'll be open in December. Working with the company right now to redesign it and get that to go live, so that would be in December. And then our annual donation campaign for the Beach Grove Education Foundation is underway. We will never refuse money from the community or anyone, because all that money, it stays in Beach Grove for Beach Grove students. And one of the things that is so important, and I've said this at every school I've been to for our campaign, is that when I go out and talk about the foundation, it's in our community, one of the first things they ask me is, "How many of your staff participate?" Because to them, they're saying, "If they, if it's a high percentage, then I want to support that, because I know that your own staff does that." So I appreciate all those who, the staff who've already made a pledge, for those that will, and appreciate that very much. So, but again, we welcome donations from the community for the foundation in order to fund those kinds of future projects that we take care of. So I think that's highlights for now.
Just a couple of business things before we get to talking with Dr. Keely. We need a motion to approve the minutes of this September 11th meeting.
Motion to approve.
Rick? Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And do we need to have a motion to approve the claims?
So, Beth? Do we do the 11th and the 25th? I'm sorry, I didn't hear this motion.
I didn't say the 25th when I was including it. That motion that Rick and Tim made was for both September 11th and the 25th special session minutes. Is that okay, guys?
Okay. I will again, and I'll move to approve the claims.
Okay, Beth, if you'd like to second, please.
Second.
Judy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Dr. Keely, Mrs. Keely.
Thank you. First up on business is the 2013 budget. I went through a presentation last month, and went through all of the tax levy dollar amounts and all the funds, kind of an educational opportunity, teach you a little bit more about all the different funds. I hope I didn't overwhelm you with the size of the attachment of the budget, it was very large. But Gateway, I apologize, but Gateway has a lot of attachments. It's easier to navigate, I guess, when you walk in and you go through the tabs, and you kind of see how all of the numbers kind of work together to create a formula, to create a tax rate, and everything that I went through with my shorter PowerPoint. But the actual documents in Gateway, as presented, are very lengthy, as you can see.
Eighty-seven pages.
Yeah, and that's, but the nice thing about it is that the resolution is just one page. So you don't have to page through it and do anything. You just can sign the final page, and it approves the entire 86 pages before that. So it is a really nice program. I do want to give, you know, an ad hoc to the Department of Local Government Finance, because I think they really work hard to get the program to the situation where it's rather smooth from a business director's standpoint. I also took the opportunity to already upload, with the help of Eileen and Robin, I uploaded the advertisements that have been in the newspaper already. Our hearing, we signed, we did a preliminary hearing for this. And we also did a resolution to reduce some appropriation amounts in our last meeting, as well as the CPF report, CPF plan. So that's all been uploaded, is online. All of that will be made available and accessible to the public as well. So it's gonna be a very transparent budget, that's pretty nice. So that being said, the 87 pages of the budget are all in line, and I feel very comfortable telling you that the numbers all work together quite nicely. Can I tell you that I know what the AV is gonna be for 2013? Not necessarily. And can I tell you that I know what the tax rate's gonna be? Not necessarily. And can I tell you that I know what the circuit breaker's gonna be and total dollar amounts? The answer is not necessary.
Can you tell us if the circuit breaker will exist?
It will, absolutely exist in Beach Grove City Schools. The circuit breaker is one of our most daunting.
And it will definitely affect us, right?
It will most definitely affect us, and we will lose, reduce our funding amount by a third, as usual, if not in 2013, even more. So I will report back to you when I work through that situation in November through February, as we solidify those numbers, and I'll report back to you with the dollars that we have at the end of the day. But it's gonna be, you know, we're gonna have really some tight, you know, some spending constraints to have in the future.
Cross our fingers for a higher AV.
We can do that.
With all of your hard work being done, and continue to do, I would move we adopt the 2013 budget for all the funds presented.
Second.
Rick, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I've also presented to you some resolutions that I'll need to do business in the business office, along with Dr. Kaiser. One of them is to reduce the budget when we do get those dollar amounts. I get something called 1782 notice, which is a preliminary determination of the dollars and the tax rate. If I feel that it's necessary that they've overestimated one place, I may request that they maneuver money amongst funds before they approve the final budget order and get that certified. So that's one resolution. There's also pension bond tax neutrality resolution. As you know, we use must replacement as a scenario where we neutralize some of that tax rate. We transfer interest income, which we don't have very much at all, but we do that to the general fund annually, as well as, I've been advised also to do a resolution to do inter-fund balances. However, anytime I do that, I will come to a board meeting per month and notify you, and just have a quick motion that we do an inter-fund balancing. So those are the resolutions that I'm gonna ask you to consider doing, which allows me to do business in the business office.
I'd like to make that motion to approve that, the resolutions.
I will.
And? Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And do we need a motion to approve the bonds for the school treasurer?
Yeah, that's, that's not money, those are bonds that mean that there's extra insurance, liability insurance based on fraud. And so they did a background check, a financial background check, on all of our school building treasurers. Annually, at this time, we asked them to issue a 12-month bond. We asked them to issue a twelve-month bond. State Board of Accounts requires it. And we followed through with that through a company called Beast Lukens. And so we issued those bonding. So basically, it just protects the school corporation from fraud.
I will approve those bonds.
Also, Nancy? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Personnel?
In the personnel, we have a new baseball coach and coaching staff that we'll be presenting here. So Mr. Doug Walters went through a very difficult, strenuous hiring process. It was actually pretty nice. We found out that not only our new head coach, but also all of our assistants are very in tune with baseball. It's amazing how much history they had and how much they've worked from little kids, little league, all the way up through. So I think, I think we'll have a very educational opportunity in the area of baseball this year, and I'm excited about that. Some others are some special education assistance and some paid leave days and some things like that. So pretty minor in terms of that personnel report as compared to August and September. So the next few months, you'll find our personnel downtimes, to be quite honest. So we won't have nearly the packet that I've given you in the last two months.
Thank you so much.
If you have any questions at all, you know, you can either ask me or give me a call. I mean, it was once.
I'd like to approve those.
Second.
Rick? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Wacker, you have an operation?
Okay. The Science Academy project is nearing completion, so that's a good thing. A couple of things that took place last week. The ceiling-mounted speakers for the projector, those were installed. Wall clocks were installed, soap dispensers and paper tile dispensers installed. The only thing right now we're waiting for is student chairs and some faculty desks. So I don't see any issues with it not being complete for the open house. So that'll be an exciting day.
I want to comment on what an excellent job they did on matching the brick on the front of the action. I didn't think that was possible. They did a good job.
When I was doing my Hornet Park duty this morning, and I'm out in the middle of the parking lot, and when you looked across the gym and the new facility, it was really hard to tell that that was the new construction. So you're right, I agree.
It looks like we have a donation from Target to Central Elementary for a hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-one cents. Awesome. Every little bit helps, right?
For sure.
And we need a motion to accept that donation. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now, do we have any stories? Anybody have any successes they want to talk about?
I have all kinds.
Well, first of all, I would like to recognize one of our alumni, fellow alumni. Zach Bond will be on his way to Afghanistan. When is he deployed, Tim?
He leaves on Saturday.
He's on Saturday. So I want to wish him Godspeed and ask for his protection for him and all of our military. I think everybody on the board has a son or was in or a brother that was in the military, somebody very near and dear and close. So I want to wish them protection. Want to congratulate the band and good luck to them. Thanks to Walmart for the gifts for the teachers and don't forget the school board. And thank you for talking about this. Thank you to Target. I'm kidding, totally kidding. Seriously.
Judy? I'm Lou Landringer. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.